Board regular meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. On January 9th, 2025, proper notice was sent to the Courier News and to the Star Ledger and filed with the clerk at the township of Bridgewater and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. Please be aware of the planning board policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 PM and no new testimony will be taken after 10:00 PM. Hearing assistance is available upon request. Accommodation will be made for individuals with a disability pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, provided the individual with the disability provides 48 hours' advance notice to the Planning Department Secretary before the public meeting. However, if the individual should require special equipment or services, such as a cart transcriber, seven days' advance notice excluding weekends and holidays may be necessary. And just a quick note, there is hardware within this building that is for hearing assistance should that be required. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Probst, a roll call, please. Maria, welcome. Welcome to our group. Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you.
Chairman Vesio.
Here.
Mayor Mensch is absent for the record. Councilman Kirsch.
Here.
Mr. Pappas is absent. Mr. Magora.
Here.
Mr. Wang.
Here.
Ms. Sakura.
Here.
Mr. Banga.
Here.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Here.
Mr. Chowdery. And Mr. Atkins is absent. You have a quorum. You can proceed. Oh, I'm sorry. Bill Burr, board engineer, will not be joining us. And Catherine Sarmad, our planner, is present.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, how many members of the public wishing to address the board on any land use matter not on tonight's agenda? Please feel free to come forward at this time. Seeing none, hearing on, moving on. Board Attorney, Mr. Peck, I don't believe we're issuing any oath of office this evening. So we're going to move.
Not tonight.
We're going to move on to a set of board minutes that we have from January 7th, 2025. Any comments or change to the record? Take a motion to approve the minutes for January 7th, 2025? That's Mr. Chowdery. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
That's Ms. Sakura. Could I have a roll call, please?
We can do those by voice vote if you'd like. Just need abstentions for whoever wasn't present at that meeting.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving along to the resolution portion of our agenda for this evening. We do have our first resolution memorializing our board professional appointment for Mark Peck Esquire, our board attorney, sitting to my left. Any comments, change to the record? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Bridgewater authorizing and awarding the contract professional service to Mark Peck Esquire, Florio Petrucci, Steinhardt Capelli, and Tipton. That's Mr. Chowdery. Could I have a roll call? I'm sorry. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
That's Ms. Chartewitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need a roll call for that because it's spending money.
Okay.
Chairman Vesio.
Yes.
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Ms. Sakura.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery. Mr. Atkins. I'm sorry, he's absent.
No issues. Moving along, we do have another resolution. Thank you very much and welcome back to our board.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Pleasure working.
Likewise. Our next is a resolution memorializing the adoption of Will Burr, the fourth professional engineer, as a planning board engineer. Would like to make that motion to adopt this resolution.
I make the motion.
That's Mr. Magora. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
That's Ms. Chartewitz. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Vesio.
Yes.
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Ms. Sakura.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery.
Next, we have a resolution for the Planning Board of the Township of Bridgewater awarding the contract professional service for our board planner to Catherine Sarmad, professional planner. Any comments, change to the record? Who would like to make the motion to adopt a resolution appointing Catherine as our board professional?
I'll make the motion.
That's Ms. Sakura.
I'll second.
That's Mr. Magora. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Vesio.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Ms. Sakura.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery. And just for the record, Mike Pappas arrived at 7:08.
Okay.
Should we administer the oath of office?
Yes.
I was sworn in at the township reorg.
Oh, okay. Great.
Welcome back, Ms. Sarmad.
Thank you.
Next, a resolution authorizing a word of contract for consulting planner, and that's Michael Sullivan of Clark, Caton, Hinson, at 100 Barrack Street in Trenton. Any comments, change to the record? Hearing none, who would like to make the motion to adopt said resolution?
I'll motion.
That's Ms. Chartewitz. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
That's Ms. Sakura. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Vesio.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pappas.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Ms. Sakura.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery.
Next, we do have a resolution memorializing the appointment of all elected officials. Ms. Probst, how would you like to handle this?
If it's okay with Mr. Peck, I think we can do that on one roll call.
It's the appointments where, would have been made.
Yes, they were.
At the municipal reorg.
They were made at our reorg.
As our officers.
Yeah, our elected, just chairman, vice chair, secretary and assistant secretary.
Yes, yes.
I'm going to do one.
Yeah, you could do that as a, as a block.
So just board, election of board.
Okay, the resolution is for the election of a chairperson, date of election, January 7th, on the nomination of Meritza Vasquez, Planning Board Chairman. The next is the election of a vice chairperson on the nomination of Asha Sakura for board vice chairperson. The next is an election of board secretary for Nancy Probst as board secretary for 2025. And the last, not least, is Sonia Chartewitz as elected board secretary for 2025. Any comments or change to the record? Hearing none, could I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'm going to make the motion.
That's Ms. Sakura. And a second, please.
I have a second.
That's Mr. Wang. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Vesio.
Yes.
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Pappas.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Ms. Sakura.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery.
Moving along in our resolutions, we, all other resolutions listed on the agenda this evening are in pending status, including the heritage in Bridgewater. Moving along to our application portion for the evening. We do have one application, and that's for Icon Keystone, NJP, for owner, an amended site plan at 1120 Route 22, Block 2 of 5, Block 5. And who is representing the applicant this evening?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, John Marmora, representing the applicant. It's a long name, but let's call him Link Logistics. That's the name of the parent entity, which is actually the fee owner. But yes, 1120 Route 22 East, between North Gaston Avenue and Adamsville Road North. And it's fairly simple. What they want to do is just remove unused office portion of the building and continue their current operation, just as it is currently being operated. It's, there's just no use for that building right now. It is deteriorating, so they want to replace it with nice sidewalk and green space. Unless there are questions from me, I'll move forward with our witnesses. We have two this evening. The engineer is Tony Diggan from Kim Lee Horn, and we have Frank Alessso, who is the Director of Property Management for Link Logistics. If there are no questions, I'll call both shallows men forward.
Please call them up.
Seat over here.
I'll swear them both.
Yeah, okay.
Now, if you would, we'll start. He's ready. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in connection with this hearing will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Good, great. Could you just state and spell your name for the record?
Frank Alessso. F-R-A-N-K. Alessso. A-L-E-S-S-O.
Tony Diggan. T-O-N-Y. D-I-C. E-N.
Okay. Thank you. And, excuse me, Frank, would you just explain to the board what your relationship is to this property?
I've been the Director of Property Management since 2019 for Link Logistics.
Okay. And Tony, you also have to give the benefit of your credentials since we'll be asking you to be sworn in as an expert.
Certainly. I'm employed by Kim Lee Horn. I oversee development services in New Jersey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I please have you speak into a microphone? You can pick up the hand, help the, yeah, right up to your mouth. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm employed by Kim Lee Horn. I oversee development services in New Jersey. Business address is 301 Arnie E. Boulevard, Suite 201, Princeton, New Jersey. Licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. Had it in for over 25, 20, 25 years, here before numerous boards across the state. I believe this is actually my first time appearing here. I had a couple of colleagues had a cover for me, so license is active and in good standing.
May I propose Tony Diggan as an expert in civil engineering?
Does the board have any objection to Mr. Diggan's or Mr. Alessso's qualifications?
No objection.
Please proceed.
I think you can be seated, gentlemen. Why don't we begin with Frank? Why don't you explain exactly what you're asking the board to approve Link Logistics doing and why you're asking for it?
Yes, we're looking to demolition, the office section of the building. Since our ownership in 2019, we actively marketed the space for office use and have had no interest. And at this point in time, the whole premises is starting to deteriorate and needs us to spend some money, and we don't think that it'd be wise to put the money into the building, being that there's no market for rent.
And how would the facility operate after, assuming it is approved, after the demolition work and restoration work is completed?
We would install some green space to make it the curb appeal for the neighborhood, and then the operation behind, which is Lime Mart and the warehouse, would continue to operate as they have been since 2021, 2022, when they occupied the premises.
You would not anticipate any increase in traffic or any change to the operation that would be noticeable here in Bridgewater?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions. I propose, any questions from the board?
Thank you. I'll open up our board for any questions.
I just might, I want to make sure that I'm orienting myself right to these photos that you submitted. Proposed building visual, view one and view two. Can you describe, like what, what, you know, where was the camera, so to speak, and what direction are you, are you looking?
Okay, you know, I think probably better if Mr. Diggan answers those questions because those exhibits were prepared by his office.
Okay.
Can we move on to Mr. Diggan, and there are no further questions for?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll wait. Maybe that'll be the first question. Maybe he'll even address it. All right.
You don't have the opportunity to question.
I have a question. Mr. Alessso, could you describe again the changes to the operations that will take place with this proposed, I guess, reduction in your structure?
Currently, no change in operation. The warehouse tenant in the back continues to operate as they have been for the last two years, and the vacant space, which is office, that has been vacant for, since prior to we purchased the asset, but at least five years now, six years, would be removed, and in its place would be landscaped area, trees and vegetation of that sort. Most of the building, how it works is it's actually an ancillary office area, so there's not much curb appeal that we have to do to the building, to the facade, just the one section that gives you the pass through from the warehouse to the office, and we'll do that to match the building standard as it is today.
And just for my edification, the tenant in the rear, the rearrest portion is, what kind of a tenant?
A logistics company. They distribute all types of goods.
And how many employees are, how many people are on site? What's the?
I was saying, any given time.
Operation look like? Vehicles, hours of operation?
Right now, they're working one shift from 7:00 to 5:00, and anywhere from 30 to 50 individuals. There's another building in the back. That tenant is coming out as well, and then Lime Mart would take that space as well, is the hope in the future.
And describe the vehicles that come.
Well, there are 18-wheelers that do come to the building for shipping and receiving. It's not a lot of traffic. It's anywhere from five to 10 trucks a day, and then the rest is just automatically, you know, total car parking.
And the vehicles, the, whether it's the automobiles or vehicles of employees or visitors or the trucks, what route do they use to access this? What road do they use? Or roads do they use?
They come through Route 22, and then they load and unload on, I would say, the east and west side of the buildings. That's where the tailgate areas are.
Okay.
Which you really don't see from Route 22.
And I don't remember seeing on the plans, or the vehicles, how are they loaded and unloaded?
Well, they back up to the building and the loaded vehicle.
Loading dock, into a loading dock?
Yes.
Loading dock. How many loading dock bays do you have on that structure?
No, I apologize. I'm responsible for like 350 buildings throughout the Northeast, so.
Approximate.
I would say, there's interior load, and I recall that, so I would say about 20 loading dock positions.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Another question, if I may. So you said you took over ownership in 2022?
No, that's when the tenant Lime Mart occupied the space.
Okay.
There was Baker &amp; Taylor was in there prior.
Okay. And Baker &amp; Taylor had occupied both the office space and the warehouse?
No, they may at one time have had some portion of the office space, but when we took ownership in 2019, the office space was broken up, and there were some legal offices, some medical offices, some personal business offices, I'm sure, like printing and what have you, but they were ancillary to, not connected to Baker &amp; Taylor in the back. There was Baker &amp; Taylor actually had warehouse space.
Even though the buildings were connected, they were separate operations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in the intervening time, those leases have expired and none have been interested in staying, and that's why the building, the office portion of the building is currently vacant?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman. Any other questions?
Five to 10. They come in through 22 East, enter into the property, and then dependent on the tenant's operations, whether it's shipping or receiving, but most of them come in and they park on the east side of the building. Yes.
Mr. Chowdery, could you move the mic a little closer to here?
Oh, yes. Is the truck, number of trucks actually changes based on the timing, like a Christmas time or something?
I would imagine during Christmas time, it might spike a little bit. Instead of five to 10, it may go 10 to 15 during that six-week period.
Okay.
During the regular routine week, I'm not sure of the standard of whether they come in the morning or the afternoon. I guess a lot has to do with traffic, but they definitely use the east side because that has interior loaded.
Thank you.
Sir, can you, can you just explain the phrase interior loading?
So there, the trucks actually drive almost into a garage like you would in a residential spot into, there's a garage area on the side of the building.
Instead of loading at a bay, they're going.
And then there's a bay inside in the interior of that area.
Okay, and using forklifts or whatever, they're loading.
Same type of deal. There's tailgate equipment, such as loading docks.
Okay. Is that because of like weather considerations, or there's just a logistical benefit to doing that?
That's how the building was designed, so since it's there, it just makes more sense for weather constraints.
Day like today, you don't want to be loading outside.
That's the, yeah, so you're not opening the building to the entire outside climate.
Mr. Alessso, I'm looking at page two of the land title survey here. If I'm understanding this correctly, this first section here that we're seeing, this is proposed to be demolished, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As of current, from Route 22, are you able to see this portion of the structure?
Yes.
Okay. After the demolition of the building, will the existing structure, what's to be remaining, will that be visible?
Yes, but it will be somewhat camouflaged over the landscape area that we plan to improve in front of.
And I see here from the renderings that there's some vegetation to be planted in the place of.
A berm.
A berm.
And then the planters, we're on top of the berm.
Okay. And the parking areas that are directly in front of the building proposed to be demolished, will that remain status quo?
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, there's no proposed change to any of that parking immediately upon entering from Route 22?
Correct.
Okay. The demolition process, approximately, how long would that take?
Defer to my construction department, but I'm going to say about six months.
Okay. And during this time, I'm assuming the removal of all the materials will take place within that six-months period, or will there be piles of, stockpiled of materials that'll be?
No, they'll remove the debris as going. And what would take some time is because of the age of the building, they have to do some environmental, make sure that's no asbestos or anything and such there, and if there is, that would delay a little bit of the construction of the demo, scope of work.
Okay. And for the board's information, when a demolition like this takes place, is it demolished to grade or to below grade? Is some of the below grade taken out?
There is a section on the right, I believe, that where there was the cafeteria that might be slightly below grade. Do you recall?
I believe the cafeteria, as you're looking at it, is this area right here?
Okay.
On the left side? Is that correct?
You have to refer to the exhibit that's on the screen right now.
Oh, you're right. It's on the right side.
That would be below grade. And that would be backfilled.
That would be backfilled. Okay. So ensuing would be essentially an entire landscaped area that has the proper drainage installed for, for no sheet flow to be going toward the building, obviously, toward where the existing sheet flow is.
Yes.
Be going. Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Banga.
And just regarding the adjacent parking lot, that's all that are remaining the same?
Yes.
Just the center area that we discussed earlier. And I guess those steps where the spot loads will continue to remain about what this rendering is here?
Yes. I'm sorry. The steps yet, yes, they'll remain.
So that's just exactly what's on the rendering that was made available? Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banga. Anybody else?
I just want to make sure that I understand. So when you look at this property now, from the highway, you essentially see the office building. If you look really carefully, you see some of the warehouse, but at this point, the warehouse is kind of on the sides of your vision. It, you know, you probably drive by and think it's just an office building.
Yes.
Okay.
Are those landscaping trees that are proposed to be planted? Are these deciduous trees, or how large do these get?
They would eventually grow to all the rest of the trees that are there. It's pretty much the same type of tree.
Mr. Diggan will take you all through that as well.
Any other questions? Ms. Sarmad, do you have any questions?
Just a handful, Chairman. Thank you. You mentioned that the newer tenant-owner had sought to advertise the office space. Do you know how much total square footage of office space there is?
It's just slightly under 50,000 square feet.
And you'd mentioned that prior to the new owner, it had been utilized, you know, fragmented into different tenant spaces. At any point after the building was acquired a few years ago, was it ever utilized by the current tenants?
No.
It's not? Okay. Thank you. And then I, just as a point of clarification, I think you'd mentioned that there was approximately 20 dock doors on the building?
That's my best guess.
It's just in looking at the site, and we might want some clarification, although it's not changing at all. It appears to be a little over 40 dock doors, and they're all on the western side of the building. The eastern side has those roll-up doors, but there's probably like 40 or so dock doors. Again, that part's not changing. That exists today, that operates today, but just so the board is aware, it's, you know, of what the magnitude is. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from our board members?
I don't know who this question would be posed to, but it was mentioned that there, if this is approved and this front portion of the building is demolished, that there would need to be some attention paid to materials that might have to be disposed of. If we get to that point, I'd have some thoughts about that, about how that is monitored, and we're in the midst of, in the township, there's another structure that may also be demolished, and there's an environmental expert that is engaged to help monitor the air quality, so I would like to be able to touch on that later.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public to question Mr. Alessso based At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public to question Mr. Alessio based on his current testimony. Please feel free to come forward. And if I could, for the members of the public, we're going to limit this to questions for the testimony just heard, no commentary. There'll be plenty of time for general commentary later on.
Okay. Sure, Vince O'Brien, I live at 6 Grim Drive, which is the dead end, which butts up to that complex right there. My first question is, with this demolishing of the office space and more warehouse space, are you anticipating more truckloads?
No.
Okay. Commentary to my street, which backs up to this property. Over the past 25 years I've lived there, I've had trucks trying to deliver to Baker &amp; Taylor, and they come down my dead-end street, realize it's a dead-end, and back up over my property. Do you anticipate that, or can you put up a sign?
We'd be glad to put up a sign, but Baker &amp; Taylor has been out of the building for five years.
I haven't had a problem since Baker &amp; Taylor left the building, but three times in a row with trucks backing up because there's no way out over my property and I have to fix it at my expense.
We'd be happy to put up a sign.
With the anticipation of this office space into warehouse space, more traffic at holiday times?
The office space is not going to be replaced with warehouse space. The office space, once it's demoed, will be replaced with landscaping.
Total landscaping.
Total landscaping. There'll be no increase to the square footage of the building, only decrease.
And to the left of the building, in that field which currently has the drainage, is there any work going to be done there?
None to my knowledge.
Will your company take care of the landscaping that currently has not been taken care of for some time now? If that's part of your property?
We, I was under my understanding that we did take care of the landscaping there.
My neighbor can probably speak better to that, but according to what he told me outside, the answer to that is no, they haven't taken care of anything.
I assure you that we'll take a look at that.
This is just for questions. You're starting to testify and, yeah, you can just ask him questions about his testimony.
That was the last comment I had.
Well, I think there's two valid items that have been raised, Mr. Peck, just so we can make sure as we're keeping up a punch list here. I, I think in addition to any signage, you know, we may want to just discuss communication with drivers.
Sure.
You know, because obviously trucks don't just show up at your property. There's, you know, substantial communication that occurs. So, so I'd just like us to explore an appropriate measure of, of comfort that there'll be strong communication, particularly anyone who's new to, to the complex, that they understand the traffic flow. And we can certainly work out the detail. And then the second is that we would just, you know, want to make sure that, you know, we cover that the entire property, you know, will be properly and appropriately maintained on a go-forward basis to, you know, alleviate any concerns for portions that, you know, may or may not have had that occur in the past.
Speaking of observation of the neighbor at 6 Grim, I went out there tonight to look at the lighting before I came to the hearing. And I put in 1120 Route 22, and it took me to your house. So, I didn't go there because I knew it wasn't on the Grim report. So I think that on Google, put 1120 Route 22 in there and change the location so that address mishap doesn't.
All right, so, yeah, I mean, you know, Google's a very powerful operation. I don't know how a correction like that is made, but.
This is the first that I've heard of this.
They'll, they'll fix it for you.
Okay. Yeah, I was not aware.
Okay. All right, so I guess, Mr. Peck, if we could just make sure that, you know, kind of corresponding with the, with the instructions is that there, you know, be that reach out to Google or other leading mapping services to make sure that the one and only entry to this, to this property is acknowledged along Route 22.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to ask any questions based on the testimony just heard? That'll close the public portion for this, for this witness.
Then we'll, we'll move on to Mr. Diggan.
Very good.
Tony, could you explain to the board what your relationship to this project has been? The homework you've done and the exhibits you've prepared.
Yes, I'm the engineer at Wrecker, and I've been involved in the design for a couple of years and a half.
You can go right through it, right?
As our attorney mentioned, we're here before you tonight to seek amended site plan approval for 1120 Route 22 for demolition, approximately 63,000 square foot office space. Footprint of which will be reestablished with lawn and tree plantings. First, I'm going to describe the existing conditions, and then I'll move into the proposed development activity. With the exception of this first exhibit, all the other exhibits I'm going to use have been submitted as part of the site plan application. So I can mark this in Exhibit A1. This is an aerial exhibit of existing conditions, prepared by my firm, Kimley-Horn, dated January 21, 2025. And it's a home-scale building. And north is planned north. So again, the project parcel is located at 1120 Route 22. It's a regularly shaped lot, about a 43.64 acre parcel, also known as Block 205, Lot 5. You can see it's a regularly shaped, it has frontage on Route 22, the eastbound direction. And also, the property extends out to North Gaston Avenue. The property has three right-in, right-out drives across the Route 22 right-of-way, and there is no connection along North Gaston Avenue. Along the frontage, there are mature plantings. What I've seen, a well-cup lawn out front. And this area in the northwest is wooded. And the area off to the west of the building here in the exhibit is a detention basin. In the center of the site, you have a, the total is 435,000 square foot, 370,000 of which is warehouse space, the larger box here. And centered on the front facade is, again, it's a 65,000 square foot, gross square foot vacant office building. You can see there's truck docks on the west side. I will get that number and enter that in on testimony, but it's probably in the neighborhood of 40. On the rear, there is 100,000 square foot building with a tenant, I think it's US Container at this point. And on the east side, there are drive-in doors and staging areas. At times, this has been striped out as parking. And in the front, obviously, you have parking as well as landscaping. And the office space is vacant. It's an ongoing maintenance concern, which is why they're seeking amended site plan approval to demo that. Just point out, the site is fully conforming from block requirement standpoint. In the joint review letter, the board professionals pointed out that while the office space is being demolished, and that is the permitted principal use, the warehouse use is an accessory use, but since that's not changing, it would still be. We also submitted a loan, DOT, a letter of no interest. I was pointing out in the letter that we did not include the 100,000 square foot in the rear. In reality, that didn't need to be submitted because the portion we're changing is the 60,000 square foot office space. We counted that as warehouse. It would have been a higher generator. DOT had our site plan it and knows that we typically do submit lonies that way when there's multiple uses on the site. We point out the usage changing, whether that's a pad site where you're adding more traffic to it. If that threshold exceeds 100 trips per hour, then you're in for major access permit. So in this case, I have no reservations about not having submitted a 100,000 square foot building, because again, that's not changing. If anything, we're conservative in counting the 65,000 square foot as warehouse instead of office. Again, that's being reduced, and DOT took no issue with that. Any questions on existing conditions before I move on to the proposal?
Or have any question on existing conditions?
Yeah, I have a couple. So the only way to get to, I hope my directions are right, the west, south, and east portions of the building is essentially through what I'll just call driveway number one as you're heading eastbound on 22, correct?
You can also circulate on the, you can actually get there from all the driveways. The most direct route would likely be if you're coming down to, it's like it's tenanted on this western corner. Most direct route would be the first driveway. But you can also come in the third driveway and circulate back through here.
Oh, okay. All right, that wasn't clear. Right along the property line?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank, all right, now it's a little clearer. Okay, thank you. Actually, can you, can you just move to the, to the left? Yes, thank you. All right, so if I'm following along the building, if you could scroll up, you know, somewhat slowly. So those are all trucks, and those are among the 40 bays, correct?
I will confirm that number from the survey. I don't have it right now.
The approximately 40 bays. Okay, and then if we're, if we're focused on the south part of the building, are there any entry points there?
There are bays there, yes.
Okay, along the south?
Oh, I'm sorry, along this, this southern facade?
Yes.
There may be entry points there? Drive-in doors?
I'm sorry, what?
Some drive-in doors, but not docks.
Okay, and then along the east side, are there, is there entry to the building?
Yes, there are drive-in doors on the east side.
Okay. Now, that building behind you, what is, what is that being used for right now?
Right now, it's being, it's tenanted by USA Container. So they're basically a container operation. I don't know if they're storing, I can't speak to you specifically, I don't know if they store containers in there or vehicles. Unless we're supposed to store distribution, they might even have some roof.
Then I, okay, I guess maybe what I'm looking, looking for maybe from Mr. Peck, is there a delineation between storage and warehousing? Or, you know, are they, are they synonymous? Is one a subset of the other?
I mean, it would depend what the definitions say in the township code. But you would think in the conventional sense, you know, in the land view sense, you'd think warehousing and storage would be the same, discussing the same item, but unless your definitions say otherwise.
So there are multiple definitions for warehouse, which were part of the 2021 or 2022 amendment. And that's because warehousing has changed significantly in the last 15 to 20 years. So part of what changed with all of the manufacturing and warehouse zones, or most of them in Bridgewater, was that they, warehousing, just warehousing generally, and there's, I think, three or four definitions for warehouse in the, in the code, were, were changed from a permitted use to an accessory use. As far as the implications for, for how it came to be at this board, or why it's at this board, or why it can be at this board, I included it a little bit, and I think Mr. Diggan kind of touched on it, but from a planning perspective, this is what's known as a pre-existing non-conforming use, because it was zoned into non-conformity. It existed legally before the zone changed. The zone changed only three or four years ago, so we have a good memory of it. Sometimes that's the case. But this use, this building and warehousing use existed prior to.
You know, I, I understand. I guess my, you know, layman's view of the difference between storage and warehouse, and I don't know if our code acknowledges this. To me, storage implies stuff goes in, it stays there for quite a while. Obviously, it comes out at some point. It doesn't live there forever. Whereas warehousing, to me, implies stuff goes in, it probably doesn't stay all that long. It's not intended to stay all that long, and then, and then it, it, it leaves. So I would consider them similar, not identical. And, you know, the potential impacts could also be a little bit different. Is that a, is that an accurate way to look at it?
Yeah, and warehouse is a form of storage, right? All warehousing is. And as you break it down further, there's like, your traditional dwell warehouse, before the Amazons and all of the, the straight-to-cust-to-consumer warehousing, there was dwell warehousing, which is what you think of as traditional warehousing. Longer times it sits there in the warehouse before it gets broken up, shipped out. Then there's things like distribution centers, fulfillment centers, parcel hubs, cross-dock warehouses. There's a whole breakdown, which is, I think, what the ordinance attempted to, to address. And many other municipalities have attempted to address because the state has issued guidance on warehousing because of the change to warehousing. So it's, it may be, it may be in the same big box with a lot of dock doors, but what, the actual function of the warehouse is kind of different. It's what you mentioned, like stuff will be in a warehouse, how quickly it gets turned over, the kind of vehicles that move it. That kind of defines the, the more niche portion of what type of warehouse it is. I think maybe it'd be prudent if you'd like to ask the applicant what kind of, what kind of distribution they do, how long typically things are stored there. That's a good indication. But if that, if it is any different than, than your impression of a warehouse, that's likely because as the tenants changed and things have modernized. Maybe the warehouse that was built 30, 40 years ago, and it was, I'm forgetting the name, Baker?
Baker &amp; Taylor.
Baker &amp; Taylor. It's probably changed a little bit since then. But it's very difficult to morph into the types of, the different types of warehousing without changing the building, too. So distribution facilities are usually quite larger than this. They have dock doors on multiple sides of the buildings. They have many more dock doors. Cross-dock warehousing are generally skinnier buildings with docks on either side of the building. So, but I think it may be prudent to ask the applicant to just give some, some kind of testimony about the type of warehousing.
All right, well, maybe there's a good opportunity since the question has been placed. You know, what, what, I guess what type of warehousing do you have going on now? And, you know, for the reasonable foreseeable future, what does the business model look like?
Limart, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe their lease is through 2030. Their operation is a little bit different than Baker-Taylor. Baker-Taylor was really supplying Amazon books. So they were a book distributor out of there, so depending, I guess, on the books. Some books came in on a Tuesday and went on Thursday. There could be books that came in in January, maybe didn't move to August. I'm not sure. Here, I would imagine most of the stuff that comes into the warehouse leaves within a six-month period.
Okay, and what types of materials?
All different types of house goods, personal items. They're a true, what we call P&amp;L in our industry.
Can you repeat that?
They're just a logistics company, so they pick up stuff at the port, comes in here, and then they move it to another, to an end user, but usually through a retailer or a wholesaler.
Okay, so, so they're not, you know, they're not loading up trucks and delivering it to my house?
This is not like a.
They're delivering it to like a Target or a, you know, something, something like that. Is any portion of this capable of having refrigeration?
There is no refrigeration in the space today.
Is there any anticipation for that? Okay. So the building in the, in the, in the back is not subject to this conversation? That there's no, no changes going on there?
No changes.
Okay. All right, you met, you mentioned, you know, the word Amazon, which, you know, I, I think, you know, can, can be, you know, beneficial and also scary at the same time.
Sure.
You know, given, given the way that, that the company has essentially become ubiquitous with the way we live. So in Baker &amp; Taylor was, was warehousing items that were going through the, the Amazon network?
Yes, I would call them at that time maybe middle mile, so they sold items that went to an Amazon last-mile building. But that, Baker-Taylor told me that Amazon put them out of business.
Well, Amazon put them out?
In this market. They actually relocated somewhere else, but the cost of doing business was Amazon became negative for them.
Okay, so what you're saying is like, a, a book didn't get put into a truck here and went to my house. It might have gone.
To an Amazon fulfillment.
To an Amazon location, and then it went into a truck, and then it went to my house?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Then you?
Question, if I could, I'm sorry, were you going to make a comment? The, before this was Baker &amp; Taylor, a long time ago, I remember when I was young, MAC. MAC operation utilized this, this is when I was quite young. And there's a, in the northeast corner of the property, there's a helipad, I guess you'd call it, northeast corner. That circular asphalt. I'm assuming helicopters don't land there any longer, right?
No.
Yeah. Is there any reason that that has remained in place?
No reason.
There, if you scroll down towards the bottom of the site, you can see on the east side of the site, there's outdoor storage of materials. Those are, I guess, trailers, but above that, I don't know what that material is there in the middle of the parking lot? Those containers or?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the picture was taken. My knowledge, there's no outside storage there.
And then on the western portion of the site, there are trailers, at least in this photograph, which were your exhibits. There are trailers that are parked. Is that, is that in, which operation do those trailers belong to?
Trailers that have left that 100,000 square foot building would be US Container at the time of this picture. The ones up front.
The ones up front, I believe this picture goes back to the Baker &amp; Taylor.
The, I guess, the southern part of the photograph, the back of that large structure, there's a, is that a roof? The black material, is that roof material? Is that an addition to the back of that structure?
The main building, the front? That's a canopy. There's somewhat of a platform there, and that's just an outdoor canopy.
And is there, are there, is that, are there drive-in doors? Or what?
Drive-in doors to the, if you're staring at the back of the building, to the right of it, there, there are the opportunity for a van to pull up to the back of the platform, drop something out, and someone can handpick it on the canopy.
Under the canopy?
Under the canopy.
Under the canopy, okay. Are there, I guess that's all I have, maybe questions for later when we're discussing the application.
Any other question based on the current conditions? Ms. Sarmad?
I have nothing further.
Very good.
Go to the proposal now.
I'd like to just ask any members of the public, any questions based on the current conditions? Mr. Diggan?
No hazardous materials stored there, to my knowledge, today.
Any other questions?
Would you be willing to put that as a condition?
I would have to go through the lease to see what we agreed to with the tenant Lime Mart when they moved in. But we do request MSDS sheets from all our tenants. So, and we are very cautious of any hazardous materials on our properties. It's not a good thing.
What are MSDS sheets? You mentioned some sort of a sheet with an acronym.
SDS sheets, they used to be called MSDS sheets. They tell, they're, when you see a drum and you see the triangles, it tells you exactly what the chemicals are. So they have MSDS sheets that tenants share with landlords of anything they're storing in the building. So that if they are stored there, A, it helps us for not only the environment, for insurance, are they being stored properly? And to my knowledge, there's no chemicals coming in and out of this building.
Mr. Alessa, we talked about that front area being used as office space. I believe that was in your report. The, you did mention, I heard some testimony, that there were generators on top of that roof.
I'm not sure if the generators are on the roof, they're not active, so they would be part of the demolition.
Okay. So to that end, there would be no fuel storage located anywhere nearby for fuel generation?
The only fuel storage, and I would have to confirm, I don't recall whether the fire pump to this building is diesel or electric. So if it's diesel, there would be a small container for the fire pump, for the ESFR sprinkler system. But other than that, that would be the difference. And that would be common in most warehouse distribution centers to have ESFR sprinklers.
Any other questions?
So are those gonna stay or gonna be re-lanched with trees?
We'll move on, if you would.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
He was just discussing existing conditions.
All right.
Move on now to the proposals.
I apologize, I have two more existing conditions I want to talk about. Our southern boundary, our parcel line, is a Somerville Borough Boundary. The Van De Veer Elementary School is just off the page here. There's playgrounds in the back, sports athletic fields, and it's further south. Approximately right here, I believe encompassing Grimm Drive, this is also out to Gaston Avenue. This is Bridgewater Township here. And then south of this area is Somerville Borough. And this is R10 in Bridgewater. Again, we are M1B, and the use is on the east. I'm not sure if it's occupied or not, but there are office buildings here on the east, in the M1B as well. I did mention earlier, almost directed to the cul-de-sac in Grimm Drive, but proceeded on and wanted to check out the lighting tonight, existing lighting, because it was raised in the professionals' letters. On entering the first drive, there are some pole-mounted fixtures along the drive to light the way back to the guardhouse, approximately 25 foot in height. And then as you go around the site, there's not really any sight lighting on the west side, other than the building-mounted lighting throughout, both the west side of this building, south and east side. And similarly, on the 100,000 square foot building, there's building-mounted lighting as well. Where I could see driving through North Gaston Avenue, it looks like the, there's not a mental amount of glare coming off the property line. In my opinion, it looks like it's within compliance. That's all I have for existing conditions.
Is there a fence there?
Yeah, there is a fence here you can see.
Yeah.
It's east of the base, and then it comes down the drive, probably about 20, 25 feet off the back of the curb line.
Is that fence in good repair right now?
I didn't take notice to it, so probably is. Usually if the fence is down on my way to hearing, I will point that out.
It's in good condition?
Sorry, along the property line or?
The east side.
On the east side? There was a fence along the east side. I don't know if you can be able to see here. There's a fence here separating this tenant's yard where the trailers are parked. And I believe there's a fence along this edge as well. So if there are no further questions, I'll move on to the proposed condition.
Any further questions?
Yeah, just one final one. You mentioned a guardhouse. Can you just show that location?
Guardhouse is located right here.
Okay, and, well, I mean, there's no gates or anything, but that is what is controlling access in and out of the main part of the site?
I believe there is a gate. It looks like it was open tonight when I went through, but that would be the boiling point here is the guardhouse.
I was there this morning. There was no one in that guardhouse.
Is that the only gate from any of the entrances into the complex?
When, when, when trucks are backed into the warehouse positions, the, if I'm using the right phrase, the cab, you know, of the truck, you know, I guess obviously is in front of it. As we get to the areas that are gonna be opposite our neighbors on Grimm, you know, is there, is there risk of, or is there significant, you know, light leakage through that forested area? Or is that area, including in winter time, sufficient to minimize or hopefully prevent, you know, any light from, you know, headlights? Because, you know, this, you know, if they run an operation till, I think you said, what, 7 o'clock at night? Or, well, even 5:00. I mean, you know, this time of year, it's pretty dark by then.
In the five years that I've been responsible for the building, I've never heard anybody complain about taillight, headlights.
Okay. Because, you know, I'd just be particularly concerned about, you know, the two homes, I guess, at the end of the cul-de-sac. But if I'm seeing some nods that that's never really been a problem, then I'm not going to search for one.
Will you come to the lectern, please?
Well, it's going to be question time, yeah.
Please come to the podium.
She needs to come to the podium.
If you could please come to the podium. This will formally open any questions for the public. Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Wendy Bittman, 9 Grimm Drive. Just a quick question about, we don't know the difference between your company's trucks and the building behind it, which is totally fine. But they do go through hours of the night when I'm letting out my dog, I notice. No, the headlights don't bother us with the noise. But I don't know who is going, like what trucks are going through the night. I don't, so I don't know the hours.
I'm not sure what time US container in the back, if they're truck traffic compared to... When you say ours, we're the landlord, so we're not operating there. It's our tenants.
Yeah, Lime Mart.
Lime Mart. So I'm not sure what Lime Mart's operation. I thought they were a nine-to-five, a one-shift operation. But I'm sure it's possible, too, that in a lot of warehouses, truckers do arrive to the site and park their trailers there during the middle of the night, and then pick up another truck and vacate, or a trailer, I should say. But I wouldn't know whether it was US container or Lime Mart without being at the property.
Question for Ms. Sarmad. Do we restrict hours of operation for either warehousing or storage, or both?
I don't believe we do. Unless it was enforced by the original site plan.
So our ordinance would allow deliveries at 3:00 in the morning?
I would, I think that would be a function of the noise ordinance if they were violating...
If they made noise.
Yeah, I have to, I have to see. I don't think it does, though.
You know, maybe we can parking lot that. You know, we certainly want to permit, you know, a landowner and a tenant being highly successful. But at the same time, you know, make sure that there's some reasonable protection for neighbors that are in fairly close proximity.
The issue is, is this application doesn't really touch on that use. I mean, this application is strictly limited to the elimination of the office space that's vacant. They're not expanding, they're not modifying, they're not doing anything to the existing warehouse use. So there's only so much, you know, you can go into that because it's outside, really, the scope of the application.
Okay. But at the same time, you know, because, you know, in addition to being a planning board member, I am a member of the town council. I guess if we felt as a proactive safeguard for residents, not just here, but anywhere, I guess theoretically, we could pass a township ordinance that would limit hours, correct?
Yes.
Within reason, I mean, you know, I mean...
Yes.
Wouldn't we? This warehouse is not new. This has been around for years. And maybe they have, well, 24 hours a day. Going there now after this had been there 10, 20, 15 years, I think we might run into a lot of resistance on that.
Well, I mean, that's, that's why we have excellent counsel provided to us, who would tell me whether that is or is not feasible. You know, I'm simply looking to, if possible, prevent problems. Yes, we have a noise ordinance. Our noise ordinance, generally speaking, is effective. But, you know, a noise ordinance is a little bit, you know, a dog chasing its tail. You know, if possible, you know, and, you know, I could certainly have this as a takeaway to see if this is a problem worth considering. You know, again, if I'm a, if I'm a, if I have a solution chasing a problem, then that clearly doesn't work. But if it is a legitimate problem, it's something that I, you know, I may ask our council to review, or certainly ask our administrator to keep his ears open. You know, if we do have instances of warehouse or storage operations that are occurring clearly beyond the reasonable time on the clock.
But in addition, our people living in the area have not said anything about noise.
Well, not yet. You know, so first of all, perhaps they may during the comment period. Or even if they don't, you know, I see one of, our collective role, and then speaking myself as the combined planning board and council member, as it's even better than chasing a problem with a solution is preventing a problem within reason. You know, and again, you know, I'm generally speaking not in favor of overregulation. I'm not generally in favor of any more restriction on either businesses or residences than we have to. But at the same time, you know, I'd hate to have a circumstance where, you know, we had an opportunity or have an opportunity, and then, you know, we're doing something after the fact. That's my simple point. So, Mr. Papas, you know, if it's just a point of awareness, you know, if this becomes a problem, not just here, I'm talking anywhere in the township. You know, I think it's something we may need to consider.
Certainly. Mr. Kirsch, I do have a question as a follow-up to the councilman's. On the western side of the property, between the edge of pavement and the property line, there are trees. I'm looking at the area, the tree, yeah, that area there. Is there a fence along that stretch of the property? Could you point out where that would be? So it's a chain? I'm sorry, say again? Could you speak into the microphone, please?
There's the fence we talked about that's 20 foot beyond the curb. Is that what you're referring to? But you can see that in the landscape.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to clarify. So what, is it a chain link fence? And the height? Have you been on site, Mr. Diggins?
Yes, but as I had, I mean, it looked like it was six feet.
Okay. And is it just, are there, is there just a regular chain link fence without any slats to... It is see-through. Is it possible, would the property owner be willing to consider putting some sort of a plastic, those slats that would maybe impede any headlights to... I know there hasn't been an issue for the neighbors, but, you know, if there's no ability that we have to, at this point, to regulate the hours of operation, and at some point, another tenant comes in and wants to operate 24/7, then there would be potential headlights of the cabs facing west towards those residential properties. And wondering if you would be willing to agree to a condition of approval that there would be those plastic slats that are inserted in chain link fences?
I can get back to you on that, I'm not...
Well, then we'd have to potentially wait to vote on this. I mean, that's just me. I mean, I may be the only board member, but...
As a condition of approval, we can walk the site. It is winter, and if there is a screening issue, it would show up right now. As, I don't believe you've heard, there's highlight glare issues that exist. We could kind of work with the township on that if there were an issue. It looks like it's fairly healthy there.
What type of trees are they? Are they...
I've not walked the site and identified them.
Because if they're...
Happy to walk.
There are trees that just have leaves that fall in the fall. It's not going to accomplish what I'm concerned about.
Agreed. That's why in the winter, you would see that, though. I think these are a mix of evergreen and deciduous, but... I would just state that the plastic in the fence is not always... That's a problem either that can have with noise, with residents. But I would work towards a solution.
Would you move on to the...
Yes, proposed?
Are there any other questions based on current conditions? From our board or from the public? None, please move on.
So the next exhibit I'm going to show is the grating and drainage exhibit, Sheet C400. It was submitted with a site plan, stated August 20th, 2024. And this sheet is a 30 scale. So basically, what I'm showing here is the old building footprint. Removing approximately a 32, 32,500 square foot footprint, and replacing that with just shy of an acre, if you will, of lawn. And fairly robust landscape package. Proposed landscape package does meet the ordinance requirements. For every 5,000 square foot of disturbance, you're required to plant three trees. So we're planting 26 silver maples. We're planting around 200 bushes of various species to satisfy the 10 shrubs for 5,000 square foot requirement as well as the 10 shrubs for 20 linear footage of foundation planning. There was a comment in there about the number of trees being removed. Did we catalog those? We had not. And the reason for that is, I believe, you can see our limit of disturbance is about, by measure, it's not about, it's about 16 feet offset from the building. And I believe in the ordinance, the updated landscape ordinance, 126-191, section 1C, 1A, tree preservation is required everywhere except within 20 foot of the building. I'm not sure if there's replacement after that, but all these trees would be within that first 20 feet. Many of them are evergreen and not in great shape due to the proximity of the building. By the way, this is a demo sheet, C101. It shows the tree removal. I'll go back to C400 again. Yeah, so basically the building comes down. We put nearly an acre of lawn back. The only infrastructure to speak of that's being installed is approximately 90 foot pipe from a yard drain here that would connect into the existing stormwater infrastructure. As evidenced in the stormwater management report we submitted, we do meet the requirements for seven colonate and that because of our reduction of impervious by nearly an acre, we've met the condition where our post-development is less than our pre-development peak. As far as water quality, technically not required to, we're not pre-chosen to that because of the, it's less than the acre of disturbance and we don't add a quarter acre of new impervious. All that to say, this will be a stabilized lawn area and it won't have any negative impact in terms of drainage around the rest of the site. This is odd, but I don't have anything else to say about proposed condition. I can move on to the building renderings and talk through those.
Let's proceed with them.
Please.
Finish your testimony before we go to questions.
There was the desire to point out where the rendering vantage points were coming from. So this is our sheet, C100. I took the liberty of adding these. These were not submitted this way, but I added view one and view two for the building renderings. View one is looking up that stairwell that was mentioned earlier, which will remain. And then view two is kind of cat a corner, looking back across the lawn. So again, these are the proposed building visualizations prepared by Kimmy Horn, dated November 2024. They were part of the site plan application. This is view one, looking straight up that stairwell that's to remain. You have a nice landscape package here. These are silver maples. One thing I'd point out about the building, there's a question about materials and we can talk through that a little bit. What you're going to see afterwards is again, a larger green space, the building, the front yard setback actually increases by 130 feet. You're still going to have that semblance of an office building as you drive by. You can see the continuation of the EPHIS panels and the glass, if you will. Let me move on to view two. So this is further, let's call this further west, looking back across the new lawn area. Building was connected in this area. You can see the, kind of that office feel, if you will. The material here is EPHIS, run continuous to match the east and west sides you can see now. In terms, there were some questions about demolition and how the building was connected. I think we have a structural engineer visiting the site tomorrow with the applicant to see how that's connected. We think there's an expansion joint, so it should be a pretty easy demolition. There was, if they're not and it's underpinned, we'd have to address that. That would be submitted to the building department, that demolition. Any questions on proposed conditions?
Up to the board for questioning.
Does that conclude your testimony?
It does.
Okay. You mentioned there was an expansion joint potentially. Does that mean that this was an expansion at one point, the office space?
Not by virtue there being an expansion joint. It could have been built that way from day one. I don't know the answer to that.
That front portion of the building has been there as long as I can remember. Not sure if it was part of the original, but I think it's always been there. They, a number of years ago, it was enhanced. The appearance of it was enhanced with this fancy glass, but it's been there as long as, as long as I can remember.
Landscaping that's proposed, from what I'm seeing, is there any proposed walkways to be installed? Or is that essentially existing walkways based on the parking that was there? Are there any walkways that are proposed within landscaping that's proposed or?
The walkway borders are the walkways that are there.
That are there, okay.
16 feet of those, so we kept that as the border.
So everything outside of landscaping is utilizing existing walking paths?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a good question? Is there, is there an entrance at the front? Is that what's kind of to the right?
In this view, this was the, the parking lot is approximately four foot lower than the building finished floor was right here. So that's, there will be steps up. That grade separation will be the same. I can go to the arrow exhibit and show you a little more clearly. That's this area right here. So this parking lot's, not all of it, but a portion of it's four foot lower approximately. So this will remain. This will be your lawn area here.
Will there still be an entrance at the front of the building or?
Sorry, no, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Bagna.
So we have the main warehousing building. Is the front facade going to match what's currently pre-existing there, basically? Will that would be, what's there currently will also be updated to reflect or, you know, I don't know if it can just repair or just for aesthetic purposes?
What exists today will just exist there and then the connection that we were talking about with the expansion joint, that opened. And when that goes away, will be finished off to match the rest of the building that's still, what's currently there and has been there as far as I know from the original construction of the building back 30, 40 years ago.
From the exterior, it looks like a two-story office building, but internally it's one.
Yes, just clear.
One high, high ceiling space.
Yes.
Mr. Wang, please.
Is there any signage installed or put on the building in the future?
Signage, any signage?
Any signage?
Nothing has been requested by Line Mart today. If it was, they would have to go through township approval.
So are there any lighting on this site after, after this renovated?
Did you say hiking?
The lighting.
Lighting.
Yeah.
We don't plan on upgrading any of the lighting. There might be one or two fixtures that are added to the front. The one thing that we may be doing to this building, and I would have to confirm, is all our buildings are being upgraded to LED lighting. So that would, I wouldn't say it would brighten the spot because we work with different lighting fixtures and bulbs to maintain appropriate lighting, but it just becomes an efficient thing for us as far as cost.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
If the proposed, I mean, you're not going to be touching the Line Mart, and if you have a concern, are you interested in putting solar down at any point in time or?
We have nothing in the plans to add solar to the building today, no.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I guess I have, you know, kind of a conceptual question. You know, because it was said before, well, you know, nothing's really changing in that building, so you're kind of limited with, with, with what you can do. And I guess I'm going to challenge that and say, well, they are changing the front facade of the building. They're essentially closing a hole that's going to be created when the office building and whatever connector piece is taken out. So, you know, I guess I'd just like to understand, does that open the door for us to explore the operation that's going on in that building?
Well, they're not seeking a variance. They're only seeking amended site plan approval. When a planning board considers site plan approval, really the proper inquiry is to what extent do they meet the township's site plan ordinance, ingress, egress, stormwater type things? Since it's already a lawful pre-existing non-conforming use, that inquiry's been settled. So it's really, are there, you know, again, issues with traffic circulation, with lighting, with noise, things like that.
So those are inbounds. Traffic, lighting, noise, exterior fencing.
Do you think the site accommodate, you know, what's happening? In this instance, you know, again, they're just seeking to remove vacant space. And they've testified that the, you know, the tenant's the same, but it's certainly, you know, fair, fair game.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, if I can. So just following up the councilman's questions. Does, Mr. Peck, do you know, does Ms. Sarmad, do you know, the, when was the last, or the attorney for the applicant, when was the last site plan approval for this site?
When we were, you can answer if you know better. When we were going through the use of the site and trying to find, initially with a demo, the building may be smaller and there was minimal confidence for the市政 side. They weren't sure of what happened. Even I was unsure because it was interesting. But I said, you know, let's try and locate the resolution. You never know if that office building is probably part of this prior approval as a rain that's often in the view of Mark 22 or whatever. And so we landed on that head and then site plan approval because of the kind of aesthetics of 22 and, you know, we could never locate very much approval. So I relied upon aerial imagery to see when the building was built. No, we didn't.
More than that. It's got to be probably upwards of 50 years, if not more, because
I'm 56.
This is, this building has been there as long as I can remember, even as a very young child. So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We did submit an Oprah request, but unable to locate it.
Question.
Answer to your question, Mr. Kirsch. Our testimony is that the use isn't changing. I mean, obviously there's a change in the structure, but the use itself will not change because that front portion of the building is not being used.
No, I understand. The reason why I'm asking this, you know, is that, you know, typically speaking, our hearings attempt to be as collaborative as possible. You know, allowing the applicant to make the case and wherever possible, finding a solution that allows the applicant to be wildly successful in their endeavor on that site and at the same time, provide sufficient protections to any potential, you know, to any potential surrounding neighborhood. So that's really the nature of all of my concern here is where is that middle ground? You know, including some reasonable protection, you know. You know, as I think I stated earlier, I'm not in favor of overregulation. I'm not either of people's personal behavior or of corporate behavior. But at the same time, you know, I do want to make sure that, you know, we don't have a downstream problem that we could have foreseen during today's hearing.
Well, I mean, certainly Link Logistics, I don't know if you know the organization, you can certainly ask Mr. Lussow if you want more background, but it's a first-class operation. This is not their only property. They're a nationwide company, very, very substantial organization. So certainly, you know, our interest to get along well with the towns where we operate. And obviously that would include Bridgewater. We want to be good citizens, corporate citizens as well. But I just don't want to overdo the application. It's just a demolition of a unused office. So certainly, other than the aesthetics you'll see from Route 22, there wouldn't be any changes noticeable to anybody in the township once, you know, in the before and after conditions.
Yeah, no, and I'm sensitive to that. I want, I don't want to overdo it. I don't, I also don't want to underdo it. You know, I don't want to just have a situation where an applicant ever comes here and says, hi, here's our stuff, you know, motion to approve. You know, it's, you know, maybe you'd like the town like that, but you know.
I've been before this board many times before. I wouldn't know if it's some presumption.
And that's, and that's our history because, you know, we're all here to represent, you know, what's right for Bridgewater. And, and, you know, again, more often than not, that middle ground is found. And, and, you know, that's, that's the spirit that I think we all have.
Can I ask a question about outside storage? Because it's come up. And I guess to follow up on the councilman's questions, you know, I recognize that this application is limited, but yet you're here with two witnesses and they've been able to ask, answer some of the questions, not all of the questions that we've had. And maybe that hadn't been considered. But, you know, we do have concerns and we want to do our best, as Councilman Kirsch said, to try to anticipate issues. And if a property owner doesn't come before the board for some relief of something, then it limits our ability to have this kind of a dialogue. So the outside storage, I know it was said that there's these aerial photographs and we don't know when those were taken. But outside storage, you know, can get out of hand. Now, is what image that we have there bumping up against that depends upon your perspective, I guess. And that's why, again, if the neighboring property owners have a visual screen, then maybe some amount of outside storage isn't an issue. But if it become, if there's, if that screening doesn't exist or if the screening deteriorates, and that's, that's why I was questioning and making the comments about screening. And so, you know, what is, what is a reasonable amount of outside storage versus, you know, if we asked and the board, majority of the board agreed to have a condition of approval of no outside storage, that's probably unreasonable. What's a reasonable amount? Is it a percentage of the impervious surface? You know, I'd be curious of both Mr. Peck and Ms. Sarmad's comments about something like that. Is, you know, what would be a reasonable request to make to see if the applicant would agree to it? But that's why, that's why I was asking about the screening. Because again, you have residential properties to the west. Right now you have a commercial operation to the east. Whether that commercial operation continues or not in some other form, you know, we're here to try to think of, we should be thinking of those things. So that's why I asked about the screening. So I don't know if you have any comment about that. But Ms. Sarmad, would you, I don't know if you've heard my question, while, while they're thinking about my question, maybe you could, you could comment on what's an appropriate or reasonable or standard for outside storage from a percentage of lot coverage or impervious surface coverage?
Presently, it looks like they have outdoor storage that's covered in the rear where they have that kind of covered dock, which is appropriate because it's contained, it's kind of regulated in that it's underneath a canopy. On the western side of the building, it doesn't appear like there's much besides the trailer bed. It looks like maybe their trailer's back by the USA container. And I can't tell if they're parked, if they're ready to get hitched up to a truck, no idea of how long those are stored for. The concerning part is that there's. The concerning part is that there's some, this is aerial imagery from 2025, according to Google, shows something in the eastern parking lot, not cars, just stuff of some sort, which I I don't think that anything that's just kind of out there is good, because you don't know what it is, you don't know if it could leak, you don't know if it can contaminate. But I I think, you know, we have to ask the applicant, they've noted that they're not supposed to be storing stuff there, I don't believe. So I think the first thing to do is ask the applicant, if they do outside storage or utilize it presently, what portion of the site it's located on? Does it interfere with any parking spaces? Because parking is a function of the requirement. If they're being blocked by outdoor storage, that's generally not a good thing. So I guess we have to throw it back on the applicant and say, where do you presently store things outdoors if you do? And, you know, what's your, where is it?
Are you able to answer that?
I recall across my desk once there being conversation about them asking, not asking, one of our property managers toured the site and saw outside storage and instructed Limeart that it's not permitted. So I'm not 100% sure. I did not drive through the building on my way down today. If that exists today, if this aerials from 2025, I'm not sure if that's related when we informed the tenant that it's not. I don't even know what the townships, if they allow outside storage, because you talk about that, and we're talking outside storage, we're including trailers that, it's very common for trailers to be parked in a parking lot of a distribution warehouse, but outside storage, something sitting on a pallet or 30 drums or stuff like that, I wasn't aware that was even permitted in the township.
You know, in my, in the absence of a resolution, you know, for the original approval for the site, and, you know, with the, I don't know if this board should permit or regulate outdoor storage in connection with the pre-existing non-conforming use, because it could be seen as an expansion of that operation. So I think, you know, if the applicant's willing to say that there is no outdoor storage with the exception of the canopy in the rear, then there is no outdoor storage on site. Is the applicant?
Again, are you, are you willing to say that?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarmad. Does that conclude your questioning as well?
No, it does not. I didn't even get started.
Very good. Any other questions from our board? Ms. Sarmad?
Thank you. Mr. Jigan, you'd mentioned that the, kind of the black architectural detail, that's EFS panel on the, on the building facade?
Sorry, is that a question?
Yes, that's EFS panel?
Yes.
Paneling? Is that what's presently there today, or are those, or are those actual windows?
The exhibit, let me go to the exhibit. So my understanding is that there's, we're matching what's out there, and that's EFS that's out there?
So it's just meant to be a faux window to kind of replicate what was on the front of the building?
Right.
Okay, so it's just architectural in nature, it's not window panel, glass paneling, sorry?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you. As far as, I know you'd given some testimony related to the stormwater, can you just give a quick overview of how the water is captured for that existing portion of the office?
Yes. Let's give you an overview. I think my laptop is running dead. So basically, there's a detention basin in that northwest corner. There are inlets in both of the truck, well, the western truckport and the eastern parking area that loop around to the detention basin. Our proposed stormwater improvement basically connects to a portion of that front stormwater infrastructure, and then drains to the detention basin on the west.
So the, the site plan, if I, if I'm correct, there is a lawn inlet on kind of the eastern portion? That's going to direct the water that way?
So the, the replaced landscape area has a high point in the middle, kind of coinciding with that step, as you're looking in those rendered views. Part of that was sheet flow to the west, around islands to an inlet on the west side, and the remainder will drain east to that yard inlet.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. And that, and you mentioned before, that won't have, that shouldn't have any impact on how the water is currently managed today?
Should be a slight improvement because of the reduction in pervious.
Okay, thank you. Something I did not bring up, but kind of struck me as we were having the conversation, and I apologize for not catching it, was the parking, the parking count on the site. And it's, it is what it is, because they're not touching the parking, but just looking at the ordinance, and again, we don't have the resolution for when this is approved, no idea if there was a warehouse parking standard, no idea what, if there was a parking variance granted, et cetera, but the warehouse parking standard is one per 500, which, when you get to both the buildings, is almost 950 parking spaces. From a quick cursory count, there's like 450 spaces or so on the site. So I think the, the board should capture that there's a pre-existing nonconformity to parking. If we weren't talking about a pre-existing nonconforming use and a pre-existing condition for the parking, I would otherwise ask if that front portion parking is used at all, and if there's any way to reclaim more impervious, but in the, in the effort of not touching the parking to avoid a variance condition, because if you remove even one parking space, then you'd be looking at a new variance, but what's there is there, they're not touching it, so it's just pre-existing nonconformity. But as, any kind of, if this is seen favorably by the board and approved, can you provide the actual parking counts?
Yes, if it's, as, condition of approval, absolutely. I think when we discussed it, we actually have it on our block table, that we didn't analyze the parking count due to that issue.
Correct, and I just did it from an aerial, and from the site plan count, it's about 450 spaces. So it doesn't comply with the ordinance, but it exists there today, so, and it's not being altered in any way. So it would just be another pre-existing nonconformity, which doesn't require any variance relief or variance testimony. As far as the use of that front lawn area, it's just going to be, is it going to be utilized by staff? Is it, is it proposed? Is it, is it have any kind of purpose, or is it really just going to be, you know, re-landscaped and made green?
Re-landscaped and made green.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that's all I have for this witness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarmad. I'd like to invite any members of the public that wish to come up and ask any questions based on the testimony just heard. Please feel free to come forward at this time. Please come back.
Nope.
Please come back to the podium.
The microphone.
Thank you. Just state your name again for the record.
Vince O'Brien, Six Grim Drive. With all the construction we've had in our roads the past six months, the guys that have been subcontracted by PSCNG that are working on our streets are spot on stopping, starting at 7:00 AM in the morning or before. So with this demolition, what time are they going to start? What time are they going to stop?
They will start and stop whatever's permitted, but normal course of labor for that site would be probably, for demolition that we contract, is probably 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, that'll close the public portion for this witness. Ms. Memorial, do you have any other witnesses?
No, unless there are questions for us, for the, any other witnesses, I mean, I believe, like I said, it's fairly straightforward, just taking a unused part of the building down, it's just a demolition. We've discussed a number of conditions that we've agreed to. If the board is inclined to approve us, we would certainly accept those conditions.
Are there any supplemental questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Peck, do we want to review all conditions? Well, just the public gets a chance to generally comment if they wish. With that being said, any members of the public, please feel free to come forward to the podium for any general commentary based on tonight's application. There's no interest, close the. Now I could go through. Now you may go through. The conditions. Yes. Other than the standard conditions that are generally applicable to to any approval, we would have that the applicant has to reach out to Google and other GPS mapping sites to make sure that the entrance is the Route 22 entrance and and nowhere else, keep them out of the residential neighborhoods. I had that the applicant will walk the site with the board engineer to see if there's any areas where headlights or or things of that nature can leak over to neighboring property lines, and they'll remedy, you know, implement such remedial solutions as are reasonably suggested. There'll be no outdoor storage on site except for the canopied area to the rear of that main building, and they'll provide a parking count.
Yes, they're all acceptable conditions.
Question about the, the board engineer walking with the applicant's professional, would that have to be finalized prior to compliance being finalized?
Yes, it should be.
Okay, thank you.
Where the plans are signed, yeah.
Mr. Peck, my apologies, the site walk here, does that also include during the demolition, the construction phase of the landscape? We'd like to potentially have a member of the administration be available, or be on site when that demolition takes place to monitor the air quality. I mean, I guess that they'd have to follow any DEP regulations, and I don't know that a municipal, I think that's all superseded by, preempted by state law. So the state, when it comes to like air quality, I don't know that, the state, when it comes, especially in environmental regulation, they want to avoid a patchwork where you have 565 municipalities each with their own standards of what's necessary as the state comes in and says, what you need to do. So I'm not, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I know that when we've been discussing with another commercial property owner, their plan to demolish structure, they have to remove any hazardous materials, and dust is the issue when any demo takes, any demolition takes place, and the, the ability to monitor the air quality of any dust is a concern.
Those are usually conditions of the demolition permit the construction department imposes. So typically, I guess, a construction official from the construction office will will be there. Usually, there's an onsite meeting before the work begins, whether it's demolition or construction, and the construction department imposes whatever conditions it typically imposes.
We can, I can reinforce that as a condition, just even though I think it's standard operating procedure, but that a pre-con meeting will be held to, you know, review all the pertinent environmental and, you know, drainage and, you know, soil conservation district, if they're going to get involved, you know, take care of all that stuff, so it can be addressed.
Yeah, that's fine.
Our general contractor, our demolition contractor, I'm assuming this township would be no different than other, would have to get everything certified that there is no hazardous materials when we do the demolition, and if there are hazardous materials, such as asbestos, that it's going to be abated properly.
And that's, right, that's kind of the standard.
Standard in every municipality, and we would never take down a building. First of all, if we bring debris to a transfer station and there was spiked with something hot in it, we would, we'd be, you know, in trouble, they're not going to take it from us.
Can I add something? Just from, from the building permit standpoint, a building of this size, the county would be involved with as well. There's a form that they would have to fill out with their building permit. So there's oversight, not only at the, from our local, you know, from the code office, but the county would have to, over a certain, over a certain number of cubic feet, part of the building permit, the county gets involved. I'm sorry? I, I, county planning board.
County planning?
I'd have to confirm it, Mike, but there's a form that's issued with the building permit when you're, when it's a demo, over a certain number of cubic feet, so.
Thank you, Ms. Probst.
We do have an approval letter we submitted from the county planning board.
Well, Mr. Peck, at this point, now have we satisfied all conditions and requests? Yeah, just ready for somebody to make a motion, you know, either to to approve or to approve with the conditions stated, or, you know, conversely, to deny. Please, Mr. Chowdhury. Correct. I believe Ms. Sarmad had mentioned that it's a pre-existing nonconformity as far as the parking goes. We'll just memorialize that, so we have a baseline moving forward. So if they try to expand or do any other work on the building, you know, we know what we're starting with, and.
The baseline is, yeah, we'll provide that.
A light relief if any would be needed.
Yeah, we will certainly provide that.
Board of Attorney, Mr. Peck, if anybody would like to make that motion and throw us into deliberations as well?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Cora? That's Mr. Chowdhury. Okay, entering deliberations. Mr. Wang?
With the conditions, and this application is, you know, demolition of the office building, and make the building site beautiful, right? And that's, that's the main purpose. And also, I, I think, you know, basically, all the conditions should be satisfied, and with that said, I am in favor of this application.
Mr. Makura?
Couple of comments. To me, the project's scope of work is demolishing an office building, removing some tarmac atom, and doing some landscaping. I hesitate to include the warehouse as part of this project. We're coming, looking at a plan view, you're coming to that office building, and you're going to decapitate it from the warehouse. You separate it. You have a scope of work for that, and you have a cost estimate for that. I hesitate to change your scope of work by including a lot of warehouse-involved items. Regarding personnel, according to state New Jersey, there'll probably be less personnel on site. There's less peak, peak trips coming into the site, which I assume would be, the office personnel won't be coming in anymore. Well, they're not there now, anyway. But there'll be a decrease in traffic entering and leaving that site during the peak hours. Regarding parking, you've got a lot of land there, and I didn't see many cars parked there. I'm not sure how many people you have there, but I doubt you need 500 spaces. But be that as it may, there's, some calculations have to be made to satisfy the requirements. What else do I have here? I've not heard of any complaints about truck idling or parking overnight, so that doesn't seem to be a concern among the public. We've addressed the timing, we've addressed the disposal of the construction rubble. And one other item is that if you started demo work now, in this cold weather, everybody has their windows closed, and they probably wouldn't hear it. So those are my observations on the project. It's demolition and landscaping, so I would endorse this.
Councilman Kirsch?
I mean, I think I've pretty much telegraphed, you know, where where I'm going with this and and what my concerns are. You know, I, I want to find that middle ground between allowing, you know, this owner and any, any specific tenants to be successful with sufficient protections to 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 our residents, because it does abut a neighborhood, albeit a small Bridgewater neighborhood. I've said from this day, during council meetings, you know, whether, whether an issue involves three homes, 30 homes, or 300 homes, it doesn't matter to me. If it matters to our residents, it, it matters to me, you know, and that, that's the reason, you know, why we've spent this time. We've spent this time to get to a good decision. I, I think this overall. a good decision. I, I think this overall is a good decision. You know, the lens that I use, I think the lens that all of us use is not just, you know, this applicant that's in front of us, that does seem to be running, you know, a very responsible business, but anything that we do goes with the land. You know, that's the principle of any, of any relief that, that we, we ever provide. So you, you have to sometimes twist, twist the cube, you know, 90 degrees and see what that, see what things look like from there. But overall, you know, I think it's a good plan. I think there are reasonable protections for the neighborhood. Now, whether they're, you know, this opens up some degree of a can of worms for storage versus warehouse versus what should Bridgewater permit, what shouldn't Bridgewater permit, well, that, that may be a public discussion in a different forum. But, you know, overall, you know, I think this makes sense, and, you know, I wish the, the owner continued success at this property.
Mr. Chowdhury?
Given the conditions that Mr. Peck, just that I think I'm okay with.
Mr. Banga?
I'm okay with this application, you know, given the conditions that we discussed and the applicant's, you know, eagerness to accept. I think this will increase the buffer zone, you know, as discussed. I think it was about 130 feet, so, you know, right in kind of line with what we expect of Route 22. And, you know, as long as the disposal of materials are in accordance with law, I'm okay with this application.
Mr. Pappas?
I appreciate the applicants working with the board and professionals certainly think the, the appearance will be an enhancement. I think the building has always been maintained as long as I can remember, no matter who the tenant's been there. It's been well-maintained, at least from Route 22, and I appreciate the applicant's cooperation tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Chartowitz?
Based on the proposal of the demolition of the unused space and lessening the impervious coverage, creating more green space, I don't really have any opposition to this. I'm inclined to approve it, I'm in support of it, as long as you guys follow the conditions that we've mentioned before.
Ms. Akora?
I echo what Ms. Chartowitz said. I think this is a, I mean, it creates a further front yard setback, adds more green space, more space for water to go. I think this is a great, I value the fact that you're willing to do this instead of not spend money and let that office space deteriorate over time. You know, I, I really value that, instead of an eyesore that it could be, even though the building's been maintained for a long, long period of time. I don't want to deter people from making decisions like that, because I think it's the right one for the township and for you as a, as a landowner, so I'm, I'm in support and in favor of this.
And short of echoing all the sentiments that we've just heard, whenever there's an opportunity that comes up for demolition, for example, I think it's very important that it's closely monitored, especially when there's a community close by there. So I think that sets on all of our minds up here this evening on the dais, you know, air quality's important, but especially when you're talking about asbestos, which was used up until probably the year 1979 or so, possibly. So that's something I'm really looking, you know, closely at. Also, we talk about opportunities, I think also we heard some commentary tonight about the opportunities to put proper signage in place, you know, where maybe there wasn't any, that, you know, anytime there could be less impact on the residential neighborhood that abuts the area, I think that'd be great. The communication with whatever said services to correct that issue would be great. And I also appreciate the fact that you'll be working closely with our engineer as well to walk the site, I think that's also important. And I think it's also probably a good opportunity to, maybe in the future, consider that parking area in the front close to Route 22, as well as that helipad, but probably more importantly, the parking lot, if it's not being used. Again, it's right off of Route 22 and just, you know, an open area for parking for any potential nuisance in the future coming right off the highway. So, but other than that, again, I would also be inclined to support the application and, and to see that the building brought to a good state. With that, I'll take a motion to approve this application.
I'll make that motion.
With, with set conditions.
I'll make that motion.
That's Ms. Akora. And a second, please?
Second, Doc.
That's Mr. Banga. Ms. Probst could have a roll call, please.
Chairman Bessio?
Yes.
Councilman Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Pappas?
Yes.
Mr. Magura?
Yes.
Mr. Wang?
Yes.
Ms. Akora?
Yes.
Mr. Banga?
Yes.
Ms. Chartowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Chowdhury?
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Congratulations to the applicant, thank you, good luck. Okay, there's no other business scheduled this evening on the agenda. If there are any comments by our board members, please feel free.
The only question I have is looking ahead at our calendar for the foreseeable future, what do we see coming, coming down the pipeline?
Right now, we have one subdivision that is still in completeness review, they have not been submitted yet, I don't expect them to be complete before February, based on what they need to be submitted. That is the only thing as of right now that's pending for the planning board.
Okay. And so, so looking at pipeline, looking at the pipeline that you just said and the, and the calendar, so it seems like our February 4th meeting may not have anything for the agenda.
Well, we have several resolutions that need to be adopted, so why do they aren't?
Okay, so, so February 4th could be resolutions only, in all likelihood, unless some substantial progress occurs with, with what you've mentioned.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
A few of the resolutions that we only had, almost, we had quorum, but no more than that. I, I won't be able to make it that first week, and I know I was at a few of those, so just want to.
First week, February?
Yeah.
So to be clear, we're talking about the February 4th.
Right, I'll be away.
So just to confirm, we have several resolutions, so can we hear them all in the fourth?
That'd be fine. Do we have enough votes that evening?
So you need a quorum and then a majority for resolutions, correct?
No, you just need a quorum to open business. You could have, just one vote could adopt a resolution.
As long as whoever is part of that quorum, at least one member of the quorum present and voted in, in the affirmative for that application.
Okay.
So chances are, we would be looking at cancellation of the February 18th meeting. If that subdivision is, seems complete, it has variances, right? So it's 120?
No, that one is on February 4th.
Okay, so then we don't have 120 days. We'd, more than likely, that would be scheduled early March, the first meeting.
Okay. So, to just, to provide as much notice as possible, there may be a quorum challenge on March 4th. I shouldn't say a quorum, a challenge to achieving quorum.
February 4th?
March 4th. I, I see possibly four members impacted on that night.
Oh, I, I understand. Before we, before we finalize the scheduling notice, I'll take a check on quorum, make sure that we'll have enough that evening.
Any other questions? If that'll take a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Akora, can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjournment at 9:00 PM.
I'd like everyone to double-check that form that was circulating, just confirm your information.
Pass it that way.